Is that a knock? There we go.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the January 8th, 2018 Administrative Committee meeting. It's our first Administrative Committee meeting of the new year and the Chair is on vacation, so I'm filling in for Gina Trucchio today. And I guess first, the order of business is to approve the minutes from the last meeting, but, well, we can do that. And then I'd like to have Mr. Reddinger do some introductions right after we approve the minutes. And I'm abstaining from that, so.
They look good to me.
Don't really have a quorum to approve the minutes, do we? Because.
Actually, you can approve the minutes without having been there, since you are sitting member of the committee, can vote.
Okay. Well, I'll vote in favor then. They look fine to me. I don't know if, and she was, it was prior to her inauguration, so I don't know.
Sounds good to me.
They spelled correctly.
Yeah. All right. So we'll approve the minutes, and then Mr. Reddinger has some announcements that he would like to make regarding the Finance Department.
Yeah, thank you. We're trying to bring our staff up, our new staff up, to be introduced, so I will let Sarah Banks, our Assistant Finance Director, announce a couple of new additions to our Finance Department.
Sarah, you have the floor.
All right. So as you know, we've been kind of revamping the Finance Department, and Jennifer Mekoff is our new Accounts Payable and Receivable Supervisor. She's actually been on board for, has it been that long? Since September. It's, time's flying, and so I'm sorry I haven't brought her up. But Brittany Gunderson has started today, and she is our new Internal Audit Treasury Management position. So just thought I'd want you to get familiar. You'll probably be hearing from both of them with reports and stuff, so.
Probably later on this afternoon.
We're excited to have them. Exactly.
I'm impressed we have a treasury.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Gary? So, we do have two sets of minutes here that weren't approved, and I really don't know why the November ones didn't get approved.
I think it's because we didn't have a meeting.
Yeah, well, I suppose that's true. We didn't have, after, on the 26th of December, there was no meeting, so.
That's true.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from December 11th, then.
Similarly, those look good.
Okay.
Second?
We'll approve those as well. Next order of business is the selection of Committee Chair and Vice Chair, and we've already selected Gina Trucchio as the Council Vice President to chair this committee previously, so don't need to do that, but we need to decide who's the Vice Chair.
I'll defer to you.
I'm happy to do it.
Great.
Based on seniority, we'll give that position to Arthur. Okay? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item number four, Idaho Commission on the Arts Grant Application. Kathleen Burns, could you tell us what's going on with that this year?
Yes, I will. So, welcome, Ann.
Thank you.
Hello. So each year, we apply for the Entry Track Grant through the Idaho Commission on the Arts. This past year, we applied for two grants. One was a public art grant that went to the library, and then the other was the Entry Track Grant, which is used for different projects that the Arts Commission does or the Art Department does. This summer, we had Josh Olson come up from the city of Boise, and he's the curator and maintenance foreman for the public art for the city of Boise. And we toured our public art collection that we have in the city, and then filled out curated sheets per installation, and then we're creating metrics of work on that collection. So that money, to hire him to come up and pay his expenses, was part of the Entry Track Grant. We're looking at doing a cultural café for murals in Moscow, and some of the monies from this year's Entry Track will go to that cultural café. So different projects come up, but this is a way that the state of Idaho supports local arts agencies, and it's a pass-through from federal grants for American for the Arts. So, any questions? Yeah?
What's a cultural café?
So we've done cultural cafés in the past on, for instance, before we did the Public Art Master Plan, we had several cafés where we asked different businesses, different locations. We had it in this room, actually, and we had tabling. And then collectively, citizens told us where their preferences were for public art, whether it's in parks, city facilities, trail systems. The library, for instance, was rated number four and number five for a public art installation. So that cultural café kind of gathered information. We've had a lot of people that have wanted to have murals in Moscow, and so one of the things we thought about doing is having a cultural café where we would invite neighboring, like I'm in communication with Lewiston right now, and they have two murals by the Getzinger Brothers, one behind the canoe sculpture, and the other, the historical mural on Main Street, and talking to them about coming up. Met with Pullman, they have the Siler mural on the side of their coffee shop, and they have plans for some other back alley murals in Pullman. We have some mural artists in Spokane. We also have the new pool that was done by the Getzingers, the mural down in Kendrick Julieta along that pool that was also done by them. And so what we'll do is we'll bring in some people with experience, look at other communities on how they create murals, and then we've been talking to Laramie, Wyoming, and they're willing to Skype in, and we have all of their information on how they do their public murals, and they're like right-sized for our community. So we'll put it all together, and then I'm working with Bi-Local Moscow and also the Chamber of Commerce to get the businesses here to have butts in seats so that they listen to the information, and then artists as well. We also have the University of Idaho that has a new mural on Sculpture Lab, and that was part of the Arts Committee and a grant. So we'll just bring in the resources, and that's what a cultural café is for, just to explain process, best practices, who's out in the community, how are other communities doing it? And so it was very beneficial to do that with Public Art Master Planning, and brought up people from Boise to help us with that.
Cool.
Yeah. So, any other question?
So we've done this, applied for this grant and received money from this for several years, like the last five or six years, it seems like, right?
Yeah.
And what do you expect the take from this grant would possibly be?
Well, for 17, 18, it's 6,000. So for 19, it might be somewhere between 5,000 and 6,000. Everybody applies for it, and then they distribute it percentage-wise to population. What we're hoping is our track record with Entry Track will eventually take us out of Entry Track and put us into public program for the arts. And then that's just more of an immediate application every year and not supplying all these examples of work. And so we, our hope is to get into another program from continuing to do the Entry Track.
Okay. Ann, do you have anything you want to ask?
Yeah, did you say you were doing one cultural café or a series?
Just one.
Just one?
Yeah. And I'm working with Bi-Local and Chamber as to a date, when it's going to work.
Agreed.
Sounds good to me. Let's move it right along.
Move right forward with the consent agenda on this one, I think.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Next thing on our agenda today is the report, and we have a disposal, RFP, report from Tim Davis of the Sanitation Department today. Welcome, Tim.
Good afternoon. I'll start out by just giving you a brief history on our current disposal contract. The city of Moscow currently is under contract with Waste Connections of Idaho for transportation and disposal of our MSW. That material is currently being shipped down to Findlay Buttes landfill in Boardman, Oregon. The contract, the current contract has one remaining five-year option on it should the city decide to exercise that option. Waste is currently trucked from our transfer station out on Highway 8 down to the Findlay Buttes site. The contract was originally awarded to Waste Management back in 1993. At that time, Waste Management had plans to open a regional landfill down in the Washtuckna, Washington area. Those plans never came to fruition for Waste Management, and they ended up having to haul Moscow's waste down to Columbia Ridge landfill down in Arlington, Oregon, which added an extra 300 miles per round trip. So it was quite costly for them. At that time, Empire Disposal of Coalfax was the original subcontractor for Waste Management, and they provided the trucking services for the original contract. Empire Disposal was later acquired by Waste Connections. Waste Management assigned that contract to Waste Connections back in 2009, as Waste Connections also owned their own regional landfill down in Boardman, Oregon, which cut about 32 miles off of each load that was hauled from Moscow round trip. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but when fuel's up around four or five bucks a gallon, and those trucks are only getting about four and a half miles per gallon, it added up quickly for them, so it was kind of a cost savings move.
How many trucks a day, typically?
Um, we average about three, three trucks a day on a five-day work week, a little over, I think there's around 650 loads a year that go down, if I remember correctly. So the current contract costs were based on Moscow's waste being hauled to the Washtuckna site, which would have been a 148-mile round trip as opposed to 448 miles round trip. So this has been a very favorable contract over the years for Moscow. Waste Connections was approached about extending our current transportation and disposal contract under the same terms, but they declined. They insisted that any extension be tied to a fuel peg or a surcharge escalator. And tying fuel escalators to contracts really brings in a lot of uncertainty, and it's not something that I personally am comfortable with, and I know Gary's not either. So at this point, staff has developed a request for proposal for transportation and disposal for Moscow's municipal solid waste. We feel that this is a good opportunity to competitively test those waters out there for a longer-term contract while still maintaining our leverage of having that last five-year option on our current contract. By doing this, the city would not be under any obligation to enter into a contract with any of the proposers for the RFP, and we could elect to reject any or all proposals that we get, but if we do happen to get a good proposal, I think we have a little bit of leverage with that last five-year option that we currently have on the books. Recently, many of the larger disposal companies have made deals with the railroads for long-term transportation of waste to the regional landfill sites. One of the regional rail hubs is located in the Spokane Valley. Several northeastern Washington counties, as well as Whitman County, have taken advantage of this hybrid transportation service where containers of waste are trucked to the rail hub in Spokane Valley and then loaded onto a train and trained to the regional landfill down in the Columbia Gorge area. Whitman County's current costs for transportation and disposal are comparable to what we are paying now, and they just signed into this contract in late 2012, so we thought, let's put this out and see where it ends up.
Gary?
I would note as well that, as Tim indicated, Waste Connections and Waste Management before them wanted to have a fuel peg to try and get some equity, because the contract, as Tim said, when we negotiated that contract, Waste Management was very certain they were going to open that landfill out by Hooper. And so they were very aggressive and tied them into it, and now they've had 25 years of hauling our waste for a lot less than they probably should have. However, the council has been really good about listening to, when the price of fuel was up above five bucks a gallon, they came in, they asked for some relief. The council granted some relief, both to Waste Connections, I believe it was at that time, and Leita Sanitation. So it isn't like, we're not trying to drive these folks out of business, we're just trying to make sure we get the benefit of our bargain. One of the things that will come up, I'm sure, and Tim will address this, I'm sure if we end up taking this any further, but one of the reasons that we do ship our solid waste out of Leita County is that back in 1992, 93, the feds passed a law called, subtitled D, Rick Riff subtitled, I believe, which essentially said, "We're going to give you guys a one shot to close any municipal solid waste landfills you have, and you don't have to monitor them, but you can't put any more waste in them after," I believe it was October 1st of 2000, 1993. We did that, we asked Leita Sanitation to close the landfill, because it isn't just Leita Sanitation who gets held responsible, it is all the producers as well, and because we contracted with Leita Sanitation, we could be held responsible for that landfill if something happened to it. So we agreed with them that they would close the landfill, we would continue our franchise with them for, to operate a transfer station and still continue the collection. So that's how we got out of the landfill business. Since that time, over the last 25 years, Leita County and Tim's been working with a consortium of folks in Region 2 to determine whether or not a regional landfill could be opened that could service all of the folks from Grangeville to Bennewah County. That hasn't borne any fruit. There, it's very expensive, there is a huge amount of regulation that goes with it, and you need a huge volume to make it pay. Grangeville, you probably just read within the last two weeks, pulled out of negotiations a consortium with, I believe, Washington County, McCall, some of those counties, to try and move their solid waste out, because now they're shipping it to Mountain Home, I believe. Oh, no, they're shipping.
Some folks are going to Missoula, and some folks are going beyond the McCall area.
Okay. So anyway, it's just very expensive to do it. Although we continue to look at alternatives, there's not been anything that has seemed like it was a good idea so far that would not cost us a lot of money. Whitman County, just in the last couple of years, has switched over. They've been shipping for just about the same amount of time Moscow has, and this arrangement they have with trucking to Spokane, loading it on rail cars, and moving it out to, is that Robanco's landfill?
It's the old Rafico field. It's, it's just south of Goldendale. It's right across from the Columbia Ridge landfill on the Washington side of the river.
So that's a way just to cut down on your, on your transport costs. So Tim came to me with the idea of, before, we have to let Waste Connections know that we're going to exercise our last five-year option by June 1. So by getting this RFP out now, we can kind of fish the waters a little bit to see if we can get a good comparable, longer-term deal for our citizens, and if we can, great. If we can't, we've got that five-year, all we have to do is exercise it. And that's under the same terms that we negotiated back in 1993. So it seems like a great time, great idea by Tim, to do that now, so I think the council would be well-advised to authorize issuance of the RFP. And as Tim said, if we don't get a deal that looks like it's good, we exercise our option to go with Waste Connections, and we have five years to think about it.
That sounds great, and thank you for being proactive on that, too, Tim.
You're welcome.
For all the reasons you just reiterated, it sounds like a really good time to do this.
May I speak a little bit about the RFQ while I'm here? In tandem with this RFP, we've also issued an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications for development of a comprehensive sanitation system master plan, and that was released the end of November. Those were due in by the end of December. I think we've put together a committee. I believe Jean is going to sit on that committee from the council, and we're going to interview some of the respondents to that RFQ. So I just wanted to briefly touch on some of the tasks that we asked for in that RFQ. One of them's going to be evaluation of the existing sanitation infrastructure and programs to identify any vulnerabilities. The process will include an evaluation of current recycling program operations, as well as impacts from recently implemented programs, such as the roll cart garbage collection, single-stream recycling collection, and also look at alternatives for yard waste drop-off, including the potential for a yard waste curbside collection program and relocation of the recycling center. Public participation process through survey to determine the wants and the needs of the community as far as the recycling center goes, stakeholder meetings, and most likely a workshop presentation to city council at the end of the process. We've also asked them to develop a capital improvement plan, which recognizes the deficiencies and challenge areas at the current recycling center, and address how these may be improved upon with the relocation of the recycling center. Also asked them to conduct a feasibility analysis of operating a local material recovery facility for single-stream recycling materials. Currently, our single-stream materials are bailed and shipped to Seattle to a material recovery center over there, where they've got a big operation over there, where they separate out everything from the recycling stream. It's, it's one of the most costliest parts of the single-stream recycling program, so our thought is, is if it's something that's viable that we could do on the local level, it may be worth looking at. So those are some of the things that will be touched on. We plan on interviewing respondents on January 17th, and if we have a successful proposal, we'll be bringing that back to city council at that point in time.
Gary?
If I can expound on that a little bit. Over the last five years, we've looked at the recycling center facility about, I guess it's probably been close to 15 years ago. We purchased some property just to the south of the recycling center. C Street, the little chunk of C Street between Almond and Jackson was installed at that time. Back in those days, we did not have, we'd just started the curbside recycling program, did not have single-stream recycling. So the drop-offs and the sorting that was done at the recycling center was still an integral part of our recycling program. Since that time, and of course, the other ancillary program to that, or adjunct program, was the yard waste drop-off, where you enter off Almond Street and then drop your yard waste into those trailers. It was determined that with the single-stream recycling, with the roll cart program, as Tim indicated, that the whole nature of recycling in Moscow has changed. The drop-off bins, for instance, the, our current focus on single-stream recycling merely takes all of those recyclables, bails them, and as Tim said, ships them to Seattle. So is there a viability or a necessity for the, for the drop-off program? We're not sure. So that's one of the reasons, a big part of this RFQ, is to have the respondent conduct a survey of our citizens to determine what services do they want. We can then determine, okay, based on that input, how can we best provide those services, and what are the costs of those services, which will allow us to then look forward and determine what are the best services to be provided, the most cost-effective services, and allow people to make those choices. As Tim indicated, one of the things that we've talked about is the yard waste pickup program. If that was offered, would it be a subscriber program? If you had a yard, you could put your clippings in a bin to be collected from April to October, however it works out. But that's an option that we hadn't really considered before, might reduce some of the pressures on the yard waste drop-off program and allow some different options there. The yard waste drop-off program where it is right now is a little bit dangerous. It's the top of a vertical curve on Almond Street. When people are hot and heavy with the yard waste, it's, it's a little bit dangerous going up and down Almond Streets, a little bit blind at the top of that curve. Since recycling is pretty much a bailing program, you typically wouldn't put a bailing operation in the middle of a commercial residential neighborhood. So that's another reason to look at that. It was identified about four or five years ago that the recycling center should be relocated because it no longer fits in the demographic or the land use in that area. It was also identified as a major challenge area in the strategic plan, so all of this is moving forward. It's also tied into the bond for the new police station, because as was reported to council, that was the spot that was closest to downtown that was big enough to house a police station. So we wanted to make sure that before we moved it, and it was going to be moved anyway under the major challenge area designation, what would it look like? So tying it into the bond seemed to make some good sense. So that's why we're going through this entire process now, and those two processes will move together at the same time.
So the timing on it has been adjusted to coincide with that of the bond issues and the potential relocation of the police station?
Yeah, we will not have an answer. We'll be in the middle. Hopefully, we will have most of the surveys done by the time a bond election is decided, but we will have plenty of information out there about what the process will be. And again, because this was identified well before any discussion of use of the site for any other purpose was decided that it would have to be moved, or would likely be moved, that it seems to utilize that property would make some sense at this time.
Yeah, it seems like there's, we've got a lot of balls in the air here, because if we move, obviously, we're going to move the recycling center, the police station is going to go there, and then if we're going to do our own sorting of recyclables through the single stream, then we need obviously more space than a bailing operation.
Exactly.
And so is LSI involved in this discussion about using their, the transfer station site to, as a MRF?
Absolutely. And in fact, there will be an LSI representative on the selection for the RFQ, successful proposer, qualifier, whatever you want to call them.
Respondent.
Respondent. So yeah, they'll be involved. And our agreement with LSI, which runs through 2035, plenty of time. If we have located several different new operations out at the transfer station facilities, you recall the composting operation, which started about eight, nine years ago now, that was another, an expansion of that franchise, and now they take all of the, all of these bio-solids from the wastewater treatment plant, excuse me, the water reclamation and recycling facility, the WRF, or Wharf, at any rate. So they, we used to ship those to Lewiston for processing. So that was an area where we asked LSI, "Let's do a pilot program, let's see how it worked." It worked out for us. We started several additional programs. Single-stream recycling is one of the programs. The carts were another program.
Clean wood waste program out at the site.
We've had tons of them. So this would just be an extension of that. So if, if the investigation of having a MRF, a local MRF that other municipalities could use as well, would seem to make some amount of sense, and LSI has indicated a willingness to enter into those discussions.
The city of Pullman, I noticed they took glass out of their recycling so they could possibly be a participant in the MRF?
Exactly. And part of the RFQ will look at not only our local recycling stream, but at the quad city recycling stream, because I know the folks down at Lewiston Sunshine Disposal that does their collection down there, they're paying a third party to bail that material, and then they ship it off, so they're really, they're really paying a lot of money. So it makes sense to look at the four major cities in the area to see what kind of volumes everybody's bringing in, and is it something that's viable?
And if we were the entity that put the infrastructure in place, possibly it could be a revenue generator or significantly reduce the cost for the city of Moscow if we're taking in revenue from these other entities?
Potentially.
Possibility of that?
It could. Chances are, it would not be a huge moneymaker. Typically, what we do is use it to average the costs, so it costs everybody less, and we're, of course, being one of the larger players, are the major recipient of that. Very similar to the contracts that we offer to the county and the other cities in Leita County for ultimate disposal and transportation of their MSW volumes. We don't supercharge that rate in order to make money out of it. We provide it, and it just means the volume brings everybody's price down.
Okay. Well, a lot of good information about the balls in play here, and I would say we should approve going forward with this, you know? We have nothing to lose and much to gain if we get a better deal, so.
We would like, if I may, we would like to get this out, and we will get this out prior to the council meeting. We're reporting to the next committee, Public Works Finance as well, and we've already, Tim and I have already worked over the RFP, so it's ready to go. So hopefully, we'll get it out tomorrow or Wednesday.
One additional question I have about, related to the recycling center relative to the bond issue, does that require a separate question on the bond? Because it's still a facilities issue, or?
No. The relocation of the recycling center, change of programs, all of those. things would be financed through the sanitation fund. The sanitation fund has been saving up for this for many years, so it would not be related to the bond issue at all. It's just something that we need, the public needs to know that your recycling center isn't going away. It may be moved somewhere, services may change based on what you want to have, but recycling's still alive and well. Moscow was a leader in recycling and we don't intend on giving that up.
It's still one of those dominos that needs to topple-
Absolutely.
...to enable the larger issues to go forward.
Anything else, Ann?
Okay.
Okay. I guess we, as a group, would recommend that we move forward with this, Tim?
Yes, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Nice. Okay, so, that's about all we have on our administrative committee agenda today, so if you were expecting more, I'm sorry to disappoint.
Entertain a motion to adjourn. Let's go.
Second that.
Okay. We're adjourned.